All right, now that we're all in the same spot, sorry for the confusion. Like I said, multiple links set out. But I'd like to call to order tonight's special board of education meeting for Tuesday, July 28, 2020, 5:35 PM. Nubs, could we have a roll call, please?
Linda Yingling. Is Linda here? Nubs Aspic here. Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Prue. Brett Waller.
Here.
Jeremy Ratliff. Jeremy Ratliff. John Smith.
Here.
Maria Volpe. Maria should be here. I saw her name come up.
Yep, she is here, just having some difficulty on muting.
Okay. Kevin Blake is here.
Here, correct.
So I've got Linda Yingling, Paul Prue, and Jeremy Ratliff. Have either of those three been on?
I do not see them, Nubs. This is Kesha.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Nubs. Our first item on our agenda this evening would be the school reopening plans with an attached topic summary sheet from Glenda Oginski. Glenda, I'll give you the floor if you would like to take a few minutes and go through the highlights of your topic summary sheet, please.
Sure, thank you. So before we get started, I guess on behalf of the administrative team, I would like to express how appreciative we are for the support from our families and community as we've worked to make difficult decisions during our reentry planning. We know hardship was placed on our families when the state closed schools and we were forced into virtual learning, and we want the community to know that hours of time have gone into these decisions and we're not taking the situation lightly because we want what's best for all of our students. We appreciate everyone's patience and support as we work through reentry for the 2021 school year. And please know the district's goal is to minimize exposure while providing a high-quality education in a safe learning environment for every student in Merrill. So the building principals, Karen Baker, Kesha Mushak, and I met and worked on an additional learner option other than face-to-face, which is what we know the, our families preferred based on the results from our survey. And I just want everyone to pay special attention and understand that these alternate plans are not the same across the board. They're developmentally appropriate for our learners at each level, and they help to address the ever-changing COVID environment that we're faced with. So if we could begin with the communication from Prizzle, and I believe Jill is on, so that she can present that, and then we will move through each level. So once Jill is finished, then the elementary will present, and then Shannon and Ryan will present the secondary.
Glenda, were you going to put up the documents?
I was not planning to screen share. The elementary are gonna screen share, but I can if you prefer that I do that, if that will work better for you.
That would work great, thank you.
And I don't know, I can't, when I screen share Jill, it's not allowing me to go to the link.
Well, I can share, we did, we did send out a Q and A to our parents. Developmentally appropriate for preschool and our 4K is to have a four, a face-to-face learning. And that is what we're shooting for. It's not really different. You'll, you'll notice that that's not different in the scope that we're not saying some days here, some days there. There's a lot to consider with a 4K or preschool learner in regard to social emotional learning and what is gained by being around their classmates and learning just what it's like to be in school and to use the, the tools that they have there for learning. There it is. Thank you, Kesha. So it's based on all of those things that we know that are developmentally appropriate. However, some of the things that we are planning to change, as Glenda stated, we want to make it as safe as possible for both our students and our staff. That's a lot to consider in a mouthful there. So we have revised student pickup and drop-offs. Parents would not be coming into the building to keep that under control, you know, as far as who's coming in and out. Fewer transitions for students. For instance, they would be in the, in their classroom with their cohort or their class. Students will stay with those same classrooms all day. So that's helpful there, even outside at recess. We can better social distance because we are really watching our class size this year at Prizzle, and we're working on, I don't know how we're going to keep them from that spontaneous, you know, impulsive run toward the other student. That's something that we'll have to learn and we'll have to do some planning, some careful planning toward, as you can imagine. Extra safety precautions will be practiced that we didn't do before, but we have been very careful all along with hand washing. And as our school nurse can tell you, we practice a lot of self-care and we learned those things at a very young age. So even more safety precautions, and I could go into greater depth on those. We all know there's an AM and a PM session. There's a thorough cleaning of the classrooms and cleaning and sanitizing before the PM session comes in. So controlled traffic. So we'll, we'll be going one way through the hallway and out one door, in and out one door. We are, of course, limiting visitors. And then breakfast, snack, and lunch will be served in a safe environment for our students, and they'll be also separated. And we're looking at, as just as elementary, we're looking at what the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends for in-person attendance. And that is really strongly advocating for the emotional health of younger students. You want them to be together as much as possible. And I, I think that our parents have really addressed that too, that they, their kids need their friends and they need to be around them. We know, I want to acknowledge too, that the childcare piece of this is very challenging as who's going to watch children at different times. If we would change it up, we know that that would be a very big concern for most families. And then finally, I just want to tell you that we're, we're really trying to make it the safest place for children to learn and do what's right for them developmentally. Does anyone have any questions?
Kevin, I do.
Go ahead, John.
Jill, could you just describe a little bit? I seem to recall that monitoring of fevers is not a new practice for your building. Kids are sent home with fevers. Is that something that in the past was done? I guess when suspected at the school, call the parent? Is it something that's gonna be proactively done, and do you have the equipment to do that if necessary?
Great question, John. Yes, we, anytime that we had in the past, thought that a child, I mean, teachers, any teacher knows what a, what their student typically looks like on an average day and their behaviors. So anytime a teacher would notice a little bit more of a flushed, or they're sleepy, or that would be the first thing that would be checked, is they'd get, you know, they'd walk down to the office. In this case, we actually have put a touchless thermometer in each classroom so that they can check right then and there. And we are also preparing to have a room where they can be isolated from the other students until we really know what's going on with them. John, and you probably are aware of this extra measure because you're on our Policy Council Committee. You may have seen that we are also purchasing with COVID or CARES Act funds a thermometer for each of the families to check the temperature before they leave for school. So that extra measure to check before they get on a bus, or they get into the car with their, whoever transports them, so that they can check the temperature and know that they don't have it. So they can answer the question if asked, you know, any chance of a temperature, or, you know, have you checked the temperature? So that kind of extra measure. Does that address your question, John?
Yeah, it did really well. I have one more follow-up, is there's a lot of new people on the meeting tonight. I was wondering if you could give some information on that cabinet that we purchased with the CARES Funds Act money, in that, what that goal of that piece of equipment was meant for?
Sure, sure. So there's a zono sanitizing cabinet that basically is like a closet, stainless steel closet, but it uses ozone to clean anything that's put in there within a 30-minute timeframe. It kills 99.9% of the germs that are on objects. And as we all know, the students will have, they will be touching and probably putting in their mouth, you know, body, they might sneeze on them, cough on them, all of those items, and clothing, dress-up drama. We have dramatic play centers in the classroom, which are very important to learning about life. All of those things can be put into the zono for sanitizing and put back into the classroom without worry of their, if, you know, pets going to do a big job of doing the sanitizing. It does not clean them. If we see something on them, we have also the use of a dishwasher, which has a different purpose, as you know. It cleans them, and it would, the heat would sanitize them if they can withstand a dishwasher. As we know, they ruin things if we put the wrong items in there. So we, we need to be very conscious about what can and cannot go in each one of those.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have it yet, but it is ordered, so the zono is on order.
Okay, thank you very much. I know already that Prizzle took sanitation to quite a high level before this all happened, simply because attendance is an important part of your program, and health is always variable with that age group, so pretty confident you guys have that handled.
Yeah, and following the Head Start standards is why, a big reason of why we do that, because it's about health and families as much as it is about education.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Kevin, can I interrupt you a minute?
Go ahead, Nubs.
Yeah, I'm back on. I shut it off and turned it back on, and I'm back on the iPad, so. My question though, during all these slides, am I supposed to have, be able to get all these notes, or will Tammy get the slides for the minutes?
That, that was included in the packet, and we'll just make sure that, that's handled. If there's anything that is different that was not included in the board packet, we will make sure that we get them to her.
All right.
Any board members have any additional questions for Jill Seaman from Pine River School for Young Learners?
Kevin, it's Ron.
Go ahead, Ron.
Jill, I've just, you said that parents are going to be checking temperatures before they bring their students in in the morning. Is that gonna be stress to them, or are they gonna walk in, what's your child's temperature today? Oh geez, I don't know, I forgot. Or, oh yeah, I don't know. What's, what's your procedure for that?
Well, Ron, it is our hope that the parents are taking these health concerns as seriously as we all are. Obviously, none of us is going to know for certain about that, or, Ron, whether there have been medications would alter a temperature. And we don't know that, you know, even what, if, if maybe Tylenol was given in regard to a cold, or, you know, they thought maybe they were coming down with something. So that's always a concern too, is we don't, we don't know all of, everything that happens before they come to school. And that's, you know, what we deal with is when they get there, what we do have control of. But we certainly are going to really strongly encourage them to do that temperature check at home before they transport their child. Great question, Ron.
I could see some saying, yep, I checked, it's fine, and the child looks like he's burning up with a fever, you know, just because. But you have a way of checking, you said, at the school.
We do, we do. We certainly, if that was a concern, we would, if we thought that the child looked like they weren't well, right from the get-go, we'd be, we can, in isolation to look at, to check them out. You, we don't have a nurse on staff all the time, but we do the best we can with the skills and, of course, training from the Lincoln County Health Department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, can I add one other comment? I guess as a member of your policy council, to the board members, they have a unique situation that they almost have a board within a board directly in that building, and the parents that are involved in the policy council at Prizzle are probably some of the most involved parents I've been around. So like, they have accountability standards that they hold each other accountable to. So there's a great deal of confidence there that if, if things aren't being done the way they ought to be done, they all kind of work on it as a community. And they're very receptive. They meet once a month, and they're communicating all the time. So I think we have that additional assurance that this is really a family and parent-driven facility by design through the program, through the federal grants. So they will take good care of themselves, is kind of the impression I get from that family, kind of centered model.
That's true.
Thanks for adding that, John. Any other board members with questions for Jill in regards to Prizzle? Otherwise, hearing none, we will turn it over to the elementary principals. I'm not sure who is presenting first this evening. Amy, Dawn, Heather, Tricia?
Amy, sorry, my voice is cracking. Amy and I will present, I will allow Amy to speak, and I will present my screen, so you don't have to listen to all this.
Good evening, everyone. I'll wait till Ms. Goutak has our slide show up so that you can follow along as we kind of discuss the elementary plan. So, yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Our elementary reopening plans have been a process that looked at the developmental age of our students, the safety and health of our students and staff, and the education that we know every child deserves. We absolutely love our students and families, and it weighs heavy on our heart as we make these difficult decisions through a pandemic that we didn't think we'd be in. We understand that there are many different emotions and opinions, concerns, and feelings regarding decisions at this time, but we just ask everyone to help us model for our students what it's like to go through something difficult. As adults, we know that. Together, if we can help support each other, we will educate our students and keep each other safe. So there are three plans that I would like to talk about tonight. You'll see an in-person, a hybrid, and a virtual. So I'm gonna go through each one. So as our school board has approved, our current plan at the elementary levels to go back to school five days a week, face-to-face, or for families to choose to enroll in BVA, Bridges Virtual Academy. So that's our current plan as of right now. So as I speak through other plans, our plan is to go back face-to-face. Our in-person plan will include safety precautions, social distancing as much as possible, utilizing all spaces within our schools, extra cleaning and sanitizing. With our scheduling, we are prioritized keeping our students into classroom groups to decrease the possible spread, lessen transitions. Students who receive special education titles, speech, OTPT services will continue to access these supports. And I know that's been a question for our families, if those would still continue, and absolutely yes. The start of the year may look more restrictive, but we are hoping to slowly move back to a traditional school environment. But we will continue to monitor the situation and make changes that will best support our students and our staff. The communication that we already sent to families regarding this plan is linked onto the in-person slide, so if you wanted to reference that, right where Ms. Goutak is clicking her, her little hand, we've already sent that to families regarding the in-person plan. While our current plan is in-person or BVA, we feel as if it would be educationally proactive to create plans for all different circumstances. We feel that we owe our community to be ready for anything that may come. We have to consider that COVID-19 may change and directly affect our elementary school plan during the year. And because of this, we created two additional plans that we could use if needed throughout the year. Our virtual learning plan is linked to this slide as well, so if you want to reference that. If our schools are closed, are ordered to close, we have a plan for virtual learning. We understand that in the spring of 2020, we were all sort of caught off guard when schools closed by the state. If we go virtual again, new expectations for what virtual learning looks like will be developed. So we know that students would need more direct instruction with Google Meets, more assessing of student progress, and continued support that we gave for students and families. We understand that not all families have internet access, and we're developing plans that will create a more equitable situation for our families and our students. Finally, if we need a transition plan, for example, if we have to reduce the number of students in our schools, or if we have to close and reopen, we've developed a hybrid plan to accommodate a transition. The hybrid plan is both a blend of in-person and virtual learning. So you can look at the graphic on the screen. Students would be at school two days a week and be virtual three days a week. Now, I want to preface again that this is just a plan in case we need it. This is not how we are starting the year. So this is in case something comes up, we want it to be proactive and make sure we had plans in place to address any needs. A group of students would be in-person Monday, Tuesday, and that group would be virtual Wednesday through Friday. The rest of the students would be virtual Monday through Wednesday, and in-person Thursday, Friday. And there's a lot of school districts that, as we developed and looked at research, this provides the best education for our students. This allows for less students to be present at school if we need to, extra cleaning on Wednesday, and a day for teachers to collaborate and plan. So I'll give you a minute.
This is also linked.
Yep, and the hybrid model, there's also a link to that as well. So again, this plan, if we need to go to it, we want it to be proactive. Students would attend on different days, so we lessen the number of students at school. Having students two days in a row enables teachers to introduce and reinforce new content over a two-day cycle instead of every other day or every other week sort of scenario. And this attendance structure enables more time for deep cleaning between students groups and limits the number of student groups teachers are exposed to. So this is if, if there's a reason to reduce the number of students within a school. We understand that with the hybrid plan and the virtual plan comes concerns with childcare on those virtual days, just like Ms. Seaman was saying at the 4K. We are aware of that, and we'll be looking into any support that we can offer. So to reiterate, our current plan is to be back at school face-to-face, or families can choose BVA. We know the situation changes daily and that we need to make the necessary decisions to keep our students and staff safe. The community in Merrill and public school system are in this together. We know there are a lot of opinions, but please know that we always want what is best for our kids, and we, we support the wonderful staff that works incredibly hard each day to provide the high-quality education to our students. Does anyone have any questions at this time about the elementary plan?
This is Ron, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you bring up that slide again where it showed the groups, please? That's the one. Would the group that's in Group A going to school Monday and Tuesday, at home Thursday, Friday, would they flip-flop the next week and then they would stay home Monday, Tuesday, and go to school Thursday, Friday? Or is it this, this would be it?
What we know about students, and especially at the, the elementary level, is consistency is key. So we talked about that scenario and what would be best for our kids, and what we know is consistency is best. So for our students, if this plan is needed, and again, that's only an if, having students come on the same days each week, so if I'm a child, I know Monday, Tuesday, I go to school, Wednesday, Friday, I have virtual, it keeps it more consistent for families as well, because like we said, we know childcare is a concern. It would be hard as a mom to try to find childcare that differed each week. So we really took into thoughtful consideration about what our families could possibly do, even though we know that it, it's gonna be difficult if this is a possibility.
And we want to recognize that some family did want a week at a time, but that left kids not seeing their teachers for nine days at a time, and that's not developmentally for them to retain information and maintain that relationship strong. Going that long in between would be difficult.
And it looks like to me, everybody is online Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, exactly.
That would be a day that teachers, we do extra cleaning and sanitizing, so between the groups that would come, a day for teachers to plan and collaborate and do a lot of that PLC work that they wouldn't get done on the other days, to make sure that we're really driving our instruction with data-driven decisions and giving the teachers time to provide an education that's of high quality.
Okay, thank you.
And Ron, it linked here is a more in-depth, I can go into that if the group would like, of what the hybrid model would look like.
This is Nubs. My question is not to go into more, but if Plan One doesn't work, who and when and what decides whether we do two or three?
Well, like last year, when the state kind of decided we were gonna go virtual, we just wanted to make sure we had plans already set in case of those things. So we're not saying we're gonna start face-to-face and then, you know, we're just gonna pick a time to go hybrid. That's just in case something happens where the Lincoln County Health Department says we need to have less students, or our COVID count is up, we can't have all these students come into school. As educators and leaders, we want to make sure we're proactive about that and have a plan set up, so if this happens, we can keep rolling with education and make sure that we can provide that. So that's why the two plans are just if needed, rather than we're gonna go to those at this point.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
This is Ron, I got one more question. When you're registering students now, will they be told, or will you keep a list of, okay, John, Joe, and Fred are in Group A, Steve, Jill, and somebody else are in Group B, so you'll have that ready to go at a moment's notice after school starts?
Yes, we'll start developing those plans. We understand that obviously households need to be on the same groups for transportation and things like that, so we will take all that into consideration when planning those groups, so that parents are aware as well, and families are aware as well ahead of time if this is needed. Again, I want to make sure that families that are listening understand that this is not an option at this point. Our options are BVA or face-to-face in school, providing that education five days a week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. At this time, we haven't sorted the kids into the A group and B group, just for the purpose of, this model isn't approved by the board yet, so once it is, we will create those groups so that we are proactive.
This is John, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I imagine that COVID may affect families individually and not entire classrooms or schools. So with, and, and maybe this is already something just intuitive to the iPad process in schools, but say a student is out for 14 days due to quarantine, maybe not even sick. Are we prepared to livestream classrooms so that kids can basically keep up during those 14 days, or even if there's an illness? Since we can be mandated to be shut down, correct? But what if circumstance forces a handful of kids to leave? Are we prepared to handle that?
Yes, and I think that what's a positive of what happened in spring, I know there's not a lot of positives as we suddenly took this uncharted territory of being virtual, is that all of our students, not our kindergarten students yet, but all of our students have access to that one-to-one iPad and CSO, which we use at the elementary level. So what I envision happening if a student does have to stay home for a certain number of days, and it's not the whole class or the school at that point, is that we have the opportunity to provide learning on CSO. So we wouldn't be livestreaming classrooms at the elementary level just because, like legal issues and policies around younger students, but we would be able to provide CSO activities of what's happening in the classroom, just like we did sort of in the fall or in the spring, to help just like we did sort of in the fall or in the spring to help, um, close that gap of kind of when the kid is at home. And when they re-enter the classroom, we're ready to continue on so that they don't have a break in their learning.
And John, uh, to speak to that as well, um, e- even in the past, not in a pandemic, we've had kids that had to miss school for a period of time because of this illness or that situation. And, um, there are supports that we're used to putting in place when a kid has to be gone for an extended period of time. So that, that part isn't really new.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And we can turn it over to the middle and secondary level.
Hi, hi. This is Ryan. I got one more quest- quick question. Special ed kids, how do they fit into the hybrid? Same, same way?
Same.
Fit right?
Because we want to be equitable, but we understand, um, we still have special education teachers that will be supporting them even during the virtual times. Like they did in, in spring, if you weren't aware. Um, their gen ed teacher had their, their lessons, but then the special ed education teachers and the case managers also provided that special education support. Um, and we made sure we weren't overloading students. So if they were had two teachers kind of presenting something, we made sure they really had strong collaboration also with the families that what was able, what were the students able to handle at that time? But they will still be receiving services because it's a federal, federal IEP.
Okay, thank you.
An echo of course speech and OT and PT as well.
Okay.
This is John. One follow-up.
Yep.
We didn't let you, you know, we didn't let you go that quick. The, uh, in the past, if a child got sick, we were receiving that information from parents. We didn't really involve ourselves. We were like, hey, child is sick, three days, maybe they'll be back. We'll find out something. Is there plans to be more proactive? I mean, if we find out that a family is, um, positive or dealing with positive restrictions, where we take the initiative to engage the family with the options? Because I can see the, I can see the public being already frustrated with COVID and the restrictions. And we already know what we can do for them, rather than wait for them to ask. We know they're going to be out for 14 days. Is that something that we can work into the plan?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that speaks to what Ms. Gutak was talking about, that that's not uncommon. Where kids, you know, have a sickness and they're out for days and we provide that education. Um, most of our families are, you know, as, as I always say, our families are awesome in Merrill. Um, but they usually do call in, even if it's just like, my kid's going to be out for an appointment. Hey, they're going to be in at nine o'clock. Um, they're really receptive and communicative on, on those pieces for us. So we always have an understanding of where our students are. Um, even if they're just gone for the day, they do usually call in um, and make sure we know that they're not going to be attending that day. So I envision the same thing and I can, um, defer to Ms. Baker, um, with more of the health, health concern side of it, um, with the, um, Lincoln County Health Department piece of, um, kind of documenting that. But I envision our parents just letting us know, hey, they're going to be out for this. And then we would prepare that instruction and make sure that we were closing that gap of, of time that they were not in school, instruction-wise.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Shannon, you want to present your screen or you want me to?
Thank you, everyone.
You're muted.
Thanks, Heather. Hang on a second. Uh, good evening, everyone. The, um, let me know if, if, um, you can see our plan. Am I presenting?
Not yet.
Anything?
Nothing yet.
Okay, hang on. Let's try that. Now?
There it goes.
All right. So, um, as the others pointed out, um, one thing that's kind of nice about the Merrill model is that it's really, uh, focused on, uh, developmental age-appropriate approaches. So, um, as kids get older, we of course have the luxury at the high school and the middle school that they require less home supervision and, um, um, certainly transportation is freed up quite a bit at the high school and some of those kind of things. And so one of the challenges that we had, Ryan and I, when we were talking is that we can do, uh, a lot of things to take precautions in our building. Uh, for instance, we're adding a lunch shift at the high school and I can get to that a bit. And we can handle how things flow in the hallways and those kind of things. But one of the biggest challenges that we had is that we still have classrooms jam-packed with students. And so social distancing in the classroom perhaps becomes our biggest problem. And so, uh, we wanted to come up with a strategy, um, that addressed that and afforded some opportunities to, to get, uh, social distance in the classroom as best as possible. And so one of the things that we had talked about early on was this notion of a rotation of some sort and the hybrid model that the elementary, uh, shared with you as, as an option should things turn that way. Um, is pretty common. And so, um, we, we wanted to come up with a model that would, uh, afford us the opportunity to do, uh, virtual learning on a rotational basis with groups of students on a voluntary basis. And so, uh, families could pick that path and, um, and go to school, uh, physically every other day, virtually every other day. And so we would take half our school, A through M, offer this up as a voluntary option, and then students would run the rotation. One, uh, big difference though, between now and springtime is that, uh, and we test drove this, this, uh, this past week, is that, um, we have courtesy of, of being, uh, in a very good place technology-wise in our district, we have the opportunity to do true live streaming out of our classrooms. And so, um, we would do, uh, we would set up, the teachers would set up, uh, one of their two devices, either the MacBook or the, the iPad, and just simply do a live broadcast of their class for the student that's, uh, virtually at home today will physically be there tomorrow. And the reason we decided to do that is because, um, the experience that we went through, uh, throughout the district in spring, uh, to pull up, to pull off virtual learning that's not live streaming is a ton of work. And, um, we didn't want to create an environment where teachers were physically teaching and at the same time, having to come up with some Google Classroom lessons and activities and assessments and all those kind of things. So we thought, as long as students are coming every other day, and about, again, on a voluntary basis, um, that we felt it was fitting that students, uh, could attend, uh, via live stream. And, and so like I said, we test drove the technology. It works great. Uh, we checked with, um, our association's attorneys down at OSU to make sure, you know, we covered all our bases as far as like, um, student privacy and all those kind of things. And they kind of walked us through that. There's really no, uh, concerns there other than we'd want to get, uh, some, a consent form and they're sending, sending us some examples of that. And so we think we have a model that, uh, by choice, students could elect to do this. And, uh, you know, if we can get a handful of students out of each classroom through this model, then we could social distance quite nicely, uh, without really any burden to any families because it's, it's a choice that they're making. And I'll add, you know, some, some parents want virtual learning as a choice. It's going, um, it affords us all those things. We think it's a, it's a pretty reasonable plan. Um, you know, I think it was John Smith's question about, you know, the student that's out for a period of time could just jump in live every day. Um, and, you know, at the, at the risk of taking this too far, if we ever had a staff member that was quarantined asymptomatic, likely we could reverse stream it with an aide in the classroom and the teacher at home. And so there's a lot of things that this could work for, uh, for us. And again, Plan A for all of us is to get students into school face-to-face all the time. But we want to honor the, uh, the requests of the parents. We want to honor the, the guidelines of the CDC and the county. And we think this model, uh, affords us that opportunity. So, um, that's the short version of it. And, um, Brad Potter did a really nice job, uh, putting together this document. So we're putting our literature together, um, for our families. This is a draft, of course, so if we find a typo in there, uh, we haven't gone through it with a fine-tuned comb yet because we don't want to get too far in front of this. Um, but one thing, the other thing that we're going to do at the high school, and I'll let Ryan speak to the middle school specific things in a second. Um, the, um, we are lumping our Period Three, our Period Seven and our Lunch, which is our advisory and our flex and our lunch period together, which would afford us a block of about 90 minutes that, um, would, would, when we, when we lump our advisories and our grade levels together, we'll put together a block of time that students could use their, their open campus privileges, uh, to go home at lunch. Because then they would have about an hour block of time. They would essentially miss that study time. And, um, and so the goal is to add a lunch period, encourage people to, uh, to go home at lunch by having a little extra home incentive. And we think then we could social distance our lunch room in a much better manner as well. So I'll, uh, I'll pause there. And Ryan, if you have anything that you want to add, I'd-
Uh, very similar. We're working on, uh, something very similar to this, uh, about, um, you know, the focus is on keeping everybody safe and trying to follow some kind of protocol guidelines. Um, with our, uh, keeping kids in cohorts, that's, that's going to be one of the big, uh, I guess, challenges for secondary is that many times we have, um, some staff that could see upwards of 300 students in one day. Uh, right now, I'm currently working on ideas, plans to lessen that dramatically, uh, as to, um, create smaller groups, cohorts, like I said, uh, that if we were in that potential where we end up with, uh, people out, per se, we wouldn't be taking out, uh, quite a array of, of staff, if you will. Uh, if we have a kid that goes and spends and is asymptomatic and then all of a sudden we're told that every person that that kid stayed 15 minutes or more in contact with during the day, it's about minimizing that because, uh, uh, one of the things that hasn't been mentioned here is the, the challenge that we're going to have with just staffing our schools in general. Um, because I know our sublists, I've had several subs that I've talked to, they're just simply not going to be available because of their, um, their certain health condition, their self, uh, health needs. So, uh, that's another dynamic that we're trying to prep for is to limit, if you will, the, the possibility of having, uh, a, a greater number of staff out at any one time. Uh, if we were to be presented with, with a challenge of, um, being told that they have to quarantine, et cetera. Um, so, you know, that, that's going to be something, uh, and I'm messaging, uh, parents with our, our schedules. I know a lot of parents have been asking about schedules. The schedules are going to change. Um, yeah, just working on that, you know, the, the primary focus is on delivering our, uh, the best, uh, high-quality instruction that we can, uh, focusing on literacy and math, making sure that those are, um, hammered down really well. Uh, and then, you know, obviously going back into a, a normal, our normal schedules to the best of our ability, um, as obviously time and, uh, guidelines allow us to. So, uh, there's, there's a lot of concerns, obviously, uh, and dynamics with it. And, uh, we're going to try to do it the best and safest way possible. So.
Any board members have any additional questions for either Ryan from the middle school or Shannon from, um, Merrill High School?
This is Nubs. Um, I, this is just in general for everybody. Um, I heard the Mozenee District ordered face shields or head shields for like 2,000 of them to make available to teachers and students who opt to want them. Have we thought about something like that?
Now, we can defer to Dale, but I, I do know that, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Dale, but DPI is actually providing face masks, uh, if obviously they need them. Um, DPI is providing one for every student in the state of Wisconsin, I do believe. Uh, I have and, and schools have ordered, we have, we will have face shields. The district, Dale's ordered face shields for all of our staff members. Um, I don't believe it's, uh, the face shields are for the students. Uh, we do have additional stuff at our buildings as well.
Okay, that's, but you have talked about it and you've looked into it, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I-
And I would follow it up, Nubs, that I would say that, uh, I, I've spoken to over half of our staff and I have yet to talk to one of them that will not be masked or faced. Part of the concerns, so.
This is John. This is a question for Ryan.
Sure.
Did I, did I hear you say that there's still unanswered questions in your plan this evening? Um, I don't, I didn't know if I was quite following you, or is your plan the exact mirror of-
Secondary, secondary, that, that plan that you see there, Shannon and I, uh, um, discussed and talked about what would be best. We ran it by, Shannon had the opportunity to run it by his entire staff just before graduation. Uh, I had the opportunity to run it by, um, two different cohorts of our staff about just seeing the, how they feel, feel, feedback with that hybrid type model. Um, it certainly, you know, in the, in the strategy of trying to figure out how we're going to social distance, John, um, you know, the goal is to try to figure out ways to minimize and lessen the amount of, of bodies in the room. And obviously, uh, I have been speaking to parents, reaching out to me, hesitant about enrolling kids. They don't want to do bridges, um, and they, they want to continue with our, our normal routine, our normal model. Uh, but they don't, and they're not comfortable wholeheartedly sending their kid back 100%. So, you know, that's another reason why we were trying to come up with, uh, another option uh, for our families where they still, kids would have that opportunity to receive, uh, high-quality instruction from our staff, uh, in that model. So, it's not, it's not-
If I'm here, if I'm hearing you correctly, just so that we're all on the same page, the Prairie, um, River Middle Schools' plan is the same as the high school's. There just may be some social distancing specific to the building that you need to hammer out. But ultimately, ultimately, if a kid's in middle school, if I were to articulate the plan, it would be identical to what Shannon's plan is.
Yes.
Just that it, okay.
We, we're yet, John, to figure out social distancing, for example, lunch. And the only reason that is, is we don't know, all we're going on right now is rough ideas and estimates of how many kids are we going to have per lunch period. I've already got ideas about how to structure that. It's just, how can we do it? If we have fewer kids, that would make it easier for us to do it.
Okay.
Heather, you have a question?
Well, I, I just want to speak up because I know we have parents on here that have, um, raised concerns at the elementary level of another option. And I just want to let them know that they've been, like, that we've heard their concerns. And we really did take time to try to find a third option. But when it comes to the younger kids, um, we already have smaller class sizes. They're not as independent. Um, so I just want them to know that this, we did try to think of a, a third option, but at the elementary level, it presents different circumstances, um, that we, we can't just do what the secondary level is doing. Um, so I just want parents to know.
Yeah, then our parents on the elementary level can reference our opening, reopening plan and will continue to send communication. We don't have kids traveling between classrooms like the middle school and high school do as well. So that transition piece is very different for us as we can keep kids in small cohorts, in small class sizes and social distance them.
And our kids will be doing less traveling. You know, that's our goal is to limit that travel. So they will be doing less traveling. Um, and the parents I have talked to on that, that's, that, that it's going to be more of the staff moving than it is going to be the kids. So.
Maria, did you have a question?
I did, Kevin. Um, first off, I just want to state, um, how proud I am of the work that's been done with each of the buildings. Um, you guys have done a great job and, and this is a lot of work and it's a lot of emotions and it's a lot of consideration and, um, well done. But my question would be at this moment, and I'm not sure if it's for Karen Baker or whom it's for. Um, so let's say there is a positive COVID case in one of the buildings. What does that look like? What's our processes and procedures? Um, what does that look like for the students? It's for the student and the classmates, the staff. How are we handling that?
Maria, thank you for asking. I was waiting for the most appropriate, um, time to interject this information. Um, first, I'd like to start off by letting, um, everyone know, um, before we worked on these plans, that the Lincoln County Health Department gave myself and, um, our, my colleagues, a school checklist for preparing for COVID-19 in-person instruction. And this was worked on as the baseline that we needed to have in place, um, before we worked on these plans. For example, um, it talks about surveillance, you know, how are we going to monitor the buildings? Um, we need to have a COVID coordinator, of which I will be that person for the district. I will be funneling all communications, uh, to Lincoln County Health Department. Individual buildings will be providing information to center office on a daily basis with regard to the number of students that are out. Um, we had to have a mitigation plan in place. Um, and the principals have done a wonderful job explaining, for example, um, the social distancing, um, you know, how to lessen transitions, et cetera. Uh, then we also do, or, excuse me, had to have some, um, plans for six students. Then we also do, or excuse me, had to have some plans for six students. And this goes back to somewhat what Jill had talked about with Pine River School for Young Learners. There will be. An assessment tool, screening tool on our website. And that is going to be a basic checklist that families and staff will be encouraged to use each day. For example, we can look at the checklist, do I have a fever, do I have a cough? Have I had lack of, lack of taste or smell so that I can self-monitor? Or have a family monitor whether it is safe for me to go to school that day? Now, with this, then the question becomes, how do we deal with this? When a student comes into a class, what we need to always remember is that. We're going to have safety measures in place and some of those have been talked about. If the student were to present with a symptom. Now, here's the difficulty that we all have, you all know this, it could be COVID, it could be allergies, it could be a flu, etc. So as soon as a student were to present with a symptom, they would immediately. Have a mask, a face mask to put on, and then they would go to the designated isolation room, which there is. An identified area in each of the buildings. At time, at that point, they would be assessed just like. Any other year if a student were not feeling well, so that would be the same thing. The student's temperature would be taken to see if they have a temperature. It's not going to be where a student is necessarily sent home, for example, if a student has a headache. They may be instructed to lay down for a little while because that might improve their headache. If a student has a fever, naturally, that's going to be an immediate call home. Or if if a student is displaying a more COVID-like system or symptom. Now, at that point. We have what is called contact tracing. And as the principals indicated, there are going to be smaller groups of students. A teacher would then identify. What students may have been in contact with this particular student, now, keep in mind, we don't know if this student has COVID. This student may have an upset stomach because of something they ate. But they will identify any student that could have possibly been exposed exposure. Exposure is greater than fifteen minutes. Exposure is, for example, if a student touched or hugged or was in contact with another student. At that point, a student is sent home. The family may have a student tested for COVID or they they may not. That is a personal decision of the family, the the family may have a conversation with their primary provider. At that point, no action is taken, taken. If a student then tests positive. Then we go back to that exact trace or contact tracing list. That information is provided to Lincoln County Health Department and phone calls are made. If that student is not tested. What will happen is, just like any other day, a student, students are monitored for how they feel. If the student were to. Display symptoms, again, it could be COVID, it could be the flu, it could be a cold, then that same process would take place. Now, the very most important, and I cannot stress it enough. That there are HIPAA requirements. Which prevents any information from being shared. As a parent, you might say, how will I be notified if there's a student in my child's class that's tested positive? The only information or notification you will receive is if a student tests positive and your child. Has been identified as having close contact. At that point, the county will say, your child may have a possible exposure. At no time will that child's name be given out, at no time will that staff member's name be given out. At no time is one staff member to say to a neighbor, staff member. Classroom neighbor, oh, by the way, I have a student. We have to be so very diligent that we do not disclose names. And the other piece, and Lincoln County has been very. Straightforward on this, that there cannot be shaming for any student, any staff person who. Tests positive for COVID. Now, as far as. Signs out, that's going to be dictated by whether a student tests positive. Or the other piece to that is if a student is not tested but goes X number of hours symptom-free. The other piece that's very important to know is that the process for determining when to send a student home. Has not been solidified with DPI. They have it written and it's going through the review process right now, and as soon as that is communicated out to school districts, that will be another piece. That will go on the website that building administrators will have to send home to parents, will be able to put on their websites as well. So that's kind of in a nutshell. And I, the other thing that I really want to emphasize. The goal of the district is to minimize exposure. That has to do with staff, with students, it has to do with what you heard earlier from our building administrators about not having visitors in the buildings. The other piece is really what we're doing today as a community, as a MAPS family. Is going to influence whether we're able to open in the fall. Because that is really going to dictate where we're at, but know that we are in continual communication with Lincoln County Health Department. We are briefed on any updates, we receive weekly, if not daily bulletins as to where cases are at. And they actually, in all honesty, are going through a lot of our plans and putting their eyes on them as well.
Karen?
Karen?
Yes, sir.
Um, Nubs. I I agree with everything you said, but now as board members, when we get asked by the public what were our plans are. Instead of trying to explain this fifteen minute thing that you just said. Is it safe to say that we followed the guidelines of the Lincoln County Health Department? And that we were creating our own protocols to meet that?
What I would say is that we try to adhere to the best of our ability to the Lincoln County Health Department recommendations.
Perfect.
And I'll also state that DPI has indicated that schools should do it to their best of their ability, knowing that there are limitations in some areas.
Okay, thank you, that's perfect.
You're welcome, sorry for the fifteen minutes.
No, I I it might have only been five, I'm just. Gives that as an explanation.
Hey, Karen, I have one question. This is John. Okay, okay, I'm I'm. What I'm wondering, and I'm I'm impressed by is. This is all, this is all, it's just try education and. To minimize exposure when there's a positive test.
Yeah, yeah, your microphone is gargled and it's very hard to hear you, sorry.
We'll come back to you.
Is that better?
No, you want to put your question in the chat?
You're muted there.
Well, how's that?
Oh, much better, it don't sound like that.
Apparently, I didn't talk frequently enough and it went sour, so.
Okay.
So just to kind of echo back and and I I like I like the model a lot because it it places the proper responsibilities to the proper authorities. If if there is COVID activity in a classroom. I mean, our responsibility as a school is to recognize the child is sick. Perhaps send them home, but at that point, it's really in the hands of the Lincoln County Health Department. To how long the child is out, when the child may return, who gets contacted because there was contact from the child. Basically, teachers don't need to worry about, and schools don't need to worry about handling all the. Processes of pandemic. Communication, that that falls to Lincoln County Health, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, the the one piece that teachers will be responsible for. Is identifying who would be involved with contact, contact tracing. And I know, for example, when the elementary principals met with us, having a daily sheet. And really, if 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 there's a question, it's having something where you can mark who the students are, and you only hold on to that. The only time that is going to be needed is if a student tests positive. And then the other piece to that is that DPI will provide the guidance. Through the nurses, through the health department on the process of when someone will be sent home. And then they are involved if and when it is a positive.
Right, so it's really a. It's a, it's, we we have an involvement. But it's a, it's a coordination with the right authorities who whose job it is to. Communicate like this in a community, so we don't need to be having discussions in the building about what's going on, it's it's a simple. There's a positive case, that's for someone else to to talk about, someone else to discuss, we go back to classroom management, classroom education.
Absolutely.
I love it.
I feel very confident, the Lincoln County Health Department has really been step in step with us in working on this part of the plan.
Any other board members have any questions for Karen Baker?
Kevin, this is Ron.
Go ahead, Ron.
Karen, what is the legal ramifications, are staff members protected from? Some parents saying, oh, you brought it to school and gave it to my kid and blah, 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 how is, what are the legal? Ramifications there for staff members, are the staff protected?
Well, number one, that would be a violation of HIPAA to give any information. And it also. Can be forms of policy violations by any type of parent and. I know it's it, it's an emotional topic. And we just all have to be very careful to be very empathetic and very supportive of one another. And if that were to occur, to have that first as a teachable moment, to have corrective behavior. Because sometimes we just need to provide further education to another party as to how things need to be done appropriately.
I have a follow-up too, Kevin.
Go ahead, Maria.
Um, I I I think this is a question for Brian Dasher, sorry to put you on the spot, Brian. And I don't need to know the details of it, but I presume that our workers' compensation carrier has provided guidance. To us with regard to COVID as many work comp carriers have, question mark?
Yes, we've we've had guidance from on work comp and then we've also had guidance on liability issues.
All right, that's all I need to know, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Maria, thank you, Brian. Any other questions for Karen or Brian?
Kevin, I've got a question for the high school principals, yeah?
Okay, Ron, go ahead, or Shannon, or Ryan at the middle school?
Either one of them, sports, have you looked into that, what's the status of sports?
That one is a super complicated and a moving target, so we currently are have some direction from the WIA that says the. The low-risk sports, tennis, cross-country, swimming, maybe missing one, can start practicing. August seventeenth, high-risk sports, football, soccer, volleyball are in September. And so our conferences, our, well, conferences in our case, got together and. Decided that we would run an abbreviated schedule with no non-conference games, our first home football game is scheduled for. September twenty-third, for example, and so everything's pushed back per that guideline, now, there is some. Direction coming out of Lincoln Marathon, Wood County, etc., health departments. That are that are recommending or have taken the position that we should hold off on all extracurricular activities, athletics particularly. Until we have about four weeks of successful schooling in, to let that be the shakedown, so to speak, and so. That discretion is the next phase of this, so I don't know where that'll go, but that's kind of where we're at today. And I'm. I'm not, I'm certainly not in a position to make any predictions on that, that will be a very tricky one.
This is Nubs, question, Shannon?
Yeah.
Facebook says that the marching band was suspended, is that true?
I missed the last part of that, I'm sorry.
Oh, Facebook, they're just saying that because somebody tested positive that we've disbanded or quit having the marching band. Is that true?
So first to Karen's earlier point, if there's knowledge of a of a positive out there in the community on Facebook, did not come from the schools. That's the street now, so we did have. We did have a situation that we wanted to address and other parents were looking to do some self-quarantining. And so I met with Ellie Wilk and we talked about just pausing on the marching jays. And picking it back up in their next scheduled camp, which I believe is August first or certainly early August, so yes, we did pause. On marching jays, we felt that was the right thing to do, given the information we had.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions for any of our building principals or for Karen Baker?
I just got one more, school forest trips, what's the status of that? On hold. Okay.
Yeah, Ron, every field trip, all those things are on hold.
That's all on hold, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Kevin?
Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to extend my compliments to you, this was a very well-thought-out, comprehensive, rational. Logical plan for the Merrill area public schools, I think, I think that teachers, the the parents, everybody really should be. Proud of what was generated this evening and I I didn't want to go without saying that, so thank you for your hard work, I'm sure it was hard.
Thank you, John.
Kevin, Kevin, one more thing, I had a whole list of questions for the for this school opening. And I have, every one of them was answered, including a few more that I made up as I went along. So I really appreciate what those guys did, they did a good job, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, I'm sure that is appreciated by all, and I guess I I would like to say the same. A lot of effort certainly was. Put into this, I'm sure there will be. Additional questions and data along the way, but what a great start. I guess just to clarify, I guess I'll start with Glenda, since the topic summary sheet and that report came from you or Karen. This was informational this evening, although there were references in. The board reviewing and putting together any acceptance of these plans, was there any intended? Or recommended motion this evening, I did not recall any, I I believe it was informational, but.
Correct, it was informational, Kevin. If there were wishes for the elementary to continue working and planning for the hybrid return. Then I would imagine that we would either. Come back to the board seeking approval at a separate time, but we wanted to go ahead and put that out there so that everyone was informed because there were questions surrounding if. because there were questions surrounding if there was going to be another option.
Thanks, Glenda. That was my understanding. Wanted to make sure if someone was waiting to hear a, a motion, because normally we would move and, and then have discussion on the topic, but it was informational. So I just wanted to go through that unless there was anything intended that I missed.
Kevin, this is, uh, Shannon. May I just add one point here quick? Is that, um, because we're in the middle of, um, online registration, we kind of do want to share this plan out and say, this is where we are at this, at this time, and this is where we see this going. So people can make good choices whether they want face-to-face, or in our case, the volunteer hybrid or the bridges. And so, um, just to let the board know that, that we will be proceeding and communicating this plan out with our parents in the very near future.
Kevin, this is John.
Go ahead, John.
Would it assist the process if we added a motion this evening, just to kind of ratify this whole discussion so that they can move forward, knowing that the board's in favor since we have a quorum?
I would certainly entertain that.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty, the fall two thousand twenty plan as presented this evening as MAPS reopening plan.
I'll second.
Motion by John, a second by Maria. Do we have any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice. Thanks again, everyone, for providing all this information and presenting this evening. As, as other board members have said, a, a lot of work has gone into this and we'll continue to go into this and it's much appreciated by the board. Next item on our agenda this evening is an, is the addition of three custodial FTEs to support COVID nineteen disinfecting and sanitizing procedures. We had an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
This is Ron. The motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Ron, a second by Maria. Do we have any discussion on the motion or this topic?
Nubs, my understanding is that it was all paid for with the CARES Act or the CARES money, that there's no additional money to the taxpayer.
That is my understanding. Brian, could you, uh, confirm that, please, or Dale?
Yeah, this is, uh, we're funding this right now with, uh, CARES Act funding, um, with our, with our current initial allocation. Um, uh, right now Congress is considering a second, uh, funding bill. Um, and, uh, last I heard, it was still, uh, held up. I haven't, uh, had a chance to look at the news today, so I don't know where that is. Um, but, uh, I will say we're, we're likely gonna, um, we could potentially have more needs than we, uh, will have funding available for through, from the CARES Act. Um, so for example, um, we are likely going to have, um, a need for, uh, probably, uh, providing some hotspots to families who choose a hybrid or virtual option. Um, uh, or, or at least the hybrid option. If they go with, uh, BVA, um, BVA does provide, uh, internet access as part of the package there. Uh, but if they do the secondary hybrid option that we talked about tonight, uh, there may be families who will, uh, need, uh, to be, uh, provided, uh, yeah, internet access and, and, um, we are obligated to provide that um, in order to make sure that we are meeting, uh, their free and appropriate public education requirements. Um, there may be additional need, um, as we get into this for, um, uh, other things, for, for example, shields or Plexiglas dividers and things like that as we move forward. Um, and, uh, depending on how things pan out, um, I will be looking at, um, uh, at the finance HR committee. Um, be looking at, um, our budget carryover policy in relation to how we are ending the two thousand nineteen twenty year. And I believe that there'll be an opportunity to, um, utilize some carryover, um, towards some of those, uh, future needs if they should arise.
Okay, and that, uh, my next question was going to be, is three enough? Or do we need more than three people for keeping things clean?
Um, that's a good question and I'll, uh, actually let Dale handle that one, but, uh, in short, there could be. Uh, it might be, uh, there might be a need for more.
So when, when I looked at, uh, the amount of areas we have through our room schedules and everything, Nubs, uh, I did kind of some simple math in my explanation rationale on there. And we looked at additional three to four minutes per classroom and common space in order to just take the extra step of sanitizing and disinfecting tabletops, chairs and common touch surfaces. And that's where I came with the calculation of twenty-one to twenty-eight hours of, um, additional daily cleaning. So I based my FT count upon that. And we also have our subpool to be able to work with as well if we need to find, um, some short, show some shortfalls in other areas. I, I feel we'll be comfortable with this right now.
Okay, and I'm satisfied with that. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, if, if you do need more, let us know. That's important that we keep things clean.
Yeah, our, our safety and security and, and cleanliness and health is the utmost priority at this time.
Okay.
Thank you all.
I have a quick follow-up for Brian.
Go ahead, John.
Brian, can you refresh my memory in that we had excess funds at the end of this year? Without specifics, but there was a significant amount of excess just due to the things we didn't spend because of COVID. And then instead of placing into Fund Forty-Six to restrict it, we kept it. Those, those funds are still available for this year. Um, if my memory serves me right.
Yes, um, we were, uh, yeah, so the, the end of, uh, two thousand nineteen twenty, this, this, so we're in a new fiscal year, so when you say this year, I'm thinking the two thousand twenty-one. Um, yeah, we ended June thirty, um, with, uh, with what's looking to be a pretty sizable, uh, balance. Um, so we, uh, it probably a little bit bigger than that five hundred thousand that I had projected back in June. Um, not prepared right now to give a solid number on what that is, but I think it could be significantly higher than that. Um, and so if that does, uh, pan out, as I'm waiting here to finalize it for the audit, um, we will have that available and, um, we, we will probably be able to utilize, uh, uh, quite a bit of that and still maintain our fourteen percent fund balance if we wanted to. Um, and so, um, I think, uh, if we, if we, um, look at kind of pooling that carryover, uh, according to our budget carryover, uh, policy, um, we could accomplish some, uh, additional things, uh, for, uh, social distancing and things like that. You know, if we did need an additional, uh, custodian or if we needed, uh, additional, um, staff to help out in the, uh, elementary buildings or somewhere along there, if we needed extra subs to come in, um, to help out for, for, uh, this and that. Um, I, I think the funding's gonna be, I, I think we'll have some leftover money from the two thousand nineteen twenty year that we can, uh, we could utilize for that.
Yeah, thank you. I think that was what I was thinking. Between the money not spent last year, which you can push over into this year for all the various additional expenditures, plus all the CARES Act money, um, we should be looking pretty good to be able to respond to whatever need and have the money to do it without going backwards. So just so that all kind of board members are aware of that in the back of their minds.
Thanks, John and Brian. Any additional questions on this topic or this motion? Otherwise, a reminder, we have a motion by Ron, a second by Maria to approve the addition of three FTEs to the custodial department. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the Beerman Family Foundation donation for a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Merrill High School scoreboards with a topic summary sheet from Principal Shannon Murray with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
Uh, I recommend a motion to accept the donation from the Beerman Family Foundation for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to pay for the purchase of new scoreboards in the Merrill High School fieldhouse.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
Second by John.
Second by John, thank you. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those.
Looks like we got Shannon on there.
Okay.
Shannon, I wasn't sure if, uh, etiquette, if I could just speak, so I thought I'd wait to be called on, but, uh, so just to be, make the group aware that this is kind of a two-parter and so, um, while th- there are no strings attached to this Beerman donation, it's very generous. Um, the second item, uh, is the request that this be used as a revenue source moving forward to provide opportunity to support the programs that use that by way of securing sponsorships. And so I just want to make sure that that is in the back of people's mind and I'm not sure where that, that's a slight deviation from our past practice. Um, but I, I just want to make the group aware of that.
That was on the summary sheet, so we got to that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Shannon. Any additional questions for, uh, Principal Murray?
Just a comment, Kevin?
Go ahead, Maria.
Just, obviously, it's what all of us are thinking. The generosity of the Beerman Foundation has been incredible to the district and, um, so incredibly appreciated. It's just amazing.
I would agree. Absolutely. Thanks for adding that, Maria. With that being said, uh, we'll call for a vote on that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the sponsorship model moving forward with the Merrill High School scoreboards. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Principal Shannon Murray in a recommended motion. This is the part two. Uh, as alluded to by Principal Murray, do we have a motion this evening?
I recommend.
Oh, go ahead, Nub.
I recommend a motion to earmark future revenue generated through the sale of advertising and sponsorship in the Merrill High School Fieldhouse scoreboard directly to the activities and athletic program at security sponsorships.
Second.
Motion by Nubs, we have a second by Maria. Is there any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Anything you would care to add, uh, Shannon?
No, I think I, I appreciate the approach and the support that the board has given on this. Uh, it's certainly a different approach for us, but it does provide, uh, it's kind of two things, an opportunity, opportunity for those groups to have additional funding, uh, but also an opportunity for them to have some skin in the game by going out and soliciting and securing those sponsors, which was, uh, part of the Beerman message that they think there's a valuable life lesson in pursuing that, um, as a way to support their own programs.
Excellent. You, you make a great point and, uh, certainly, uh, e- exciting opportunity for them going forward from any, uh, boosters or any supporters of, uh, any of the, uh, given athletics or activities at, at the high school level. So anyone else have any additional questions on this motion or topic? Otherwise, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Our next item on, um, our agenda this evening is the personnel report with some hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements. Report from our Director of Human Resources, Edward Den. The recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening?
I'll move, Kevin.
Go ahead, John.
I recommend a motion to approve the hirings of Alex's A-strike MHS math teacher, effective August tenth, two thousand twenty. Hillary Lau, Kate Goodrich, learning technology specialist, effective August tenth, two thousand twenty. I don't see something else that should be on there, I don't think. Hang on.
I think that is the end of motion or Eddie?
It's on. I found it. My motion's also going to include Michael Kaepernick, Kate Goodrich teacher, effective August tenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second.
We have a motion by John, a second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
Eddie, did we capture everything?
Yes, sir. I just needed those three people and, uh, just as a quick update as well, um, we literally have, I think, two, two teaching positions unfilled at this point and we're, we're coming down to the final final days here. We're trying. Um, if anybody asks or inquires, we're looking for a high school reading interventionist and a middle school tech ed teacher. Those are the, the two that have been tough to fill at this point, so.
And great job for the end of July.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Any other, uh, questions on this motion or topic? Otherwise, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Once again, I want to thank everybody this evening, not only for your attendance and for your participation in putting everything together for tonight's, uh, special Board of Education meeting. So I would like to ask, uh, for a motion to adjourn.
This is Ron. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ron, a second by Maria. At seven oh two PM, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thanks again. Everyone have a, a good rest of your week.